Everyone, welcome to the November 16th Mount Vernon City School District Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Sorenson.
Present.
Trustee Redd.
Present.
Trustee Turnquist.
Present.
Trustee Patterson.
Present.
Trustee McOwen. Trustee White. Trustee Miller.
Present.
Trustee Saunders. Trustee Mitchell.
Present.
Quorum is present, sir. There are no communications this evening, sir.
Communications, thank you. We're going to start with the superintendent's report.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I want to take a moment to acknowledge that this evening is Rick McCormick's last official board meeting with us. And I want to publicly, I want to publicly thank Rick for being such a good steward and a right-hand man during my tenure in the district. I inherited Rick, and I am blessed to have gotten to know Rick over these last almost eight years. And I will surely miss you. I will miss your friendship. I will miss your stewardship, and I will miss your willingness to do and be all things to this organization for the good of all.
Thank you.
So, thank you for all that you have done, and I wish you nothing but the best in what you seek to do in the future.
Thank you.
And moving on with the superintendent's report, I have a few things I'd like to just bring to your awareness this evening, trustees and members of the public. First of all, we have started to use our data a little differently than we have in the past and put different safety nets and provisions in place. And this year, the Mount Vernon City School District is poised to achieve the highest graduation rate it has had in years. We anticipate, based on the information that we have at our disposal now and the interventions that we're putting in place, we anticipate that we may have as much as a 90% district-wide graduation rate. This significant improvement is rooted in students meeting graduation requirements, and it has been attributed to a few factors that we have been really working diligently to put in place so that would ultimately manifest itself in these kinds of anticipated results. First is the full implementation of the 2020 plan. As you know, when we started talking about creating the theme-based high schools, we wanted to ensure that students had a focus that supported their interests, their strengths, and their post-secondary goals. And we are just now at the point where the full implementation and the connection of our curriculum from our K-8 model to our secondary model is really reaping significant benefits. And we will see the results of that foresight that it took to first implement and then develop and then implement the 2020 vision. Secondly, the district has provided additional support to aid students.
Will you have your mic closer?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Secondly, the district has provided additional support to aid struggling students in extended year programs, after-school programs, and remedial programs. When I first came into the district and I attended a conference in, I think it was in California, and I came back so excited about establishing a family and community initiative, creating the FACE Office and an office of school improvement that would be a place where we could target our supports and someone to champion how we directed resources through funds and Title I grants to that. So that office is also providing further evidence that that foresight is reaping results. We prioritize all regents' exams, which allows students to receive exceptions from state examinations where applicable. And students have been placed in appropriate classes to meet their graduation requirement. And that has been a result of the stewardship of Dr. Smith and working with the guidance counselors and viewing transcripts early on to ensure that students are being supported appropriately as early as their ninth grade year and in some instances as early as eighth grade. So the guidance department has conducted several audits to ensure students are on track to graduate. And again, using this data in a way that we have not historically, I think is paying huge dividends. And lastly, the attendance teams have been diligent in getting students to come to school. Home visits have been conducted and that personal connection. So we'll be revisiting this each marking period to keep you up to date on whether or not this target, this projection is, if we're still on target to meet this projection. But we are, and I want to say thank you to the entire team, but particularly Office of Student Support Services and Pupil Personnel Services and the Office of School Improvement in collaboration with all the other members of the cabinet who have worked diligently to make this a personal goal for this organization. Also, today, we had our initial interview, some more great news. We had our initial interview today for Lincoln School as a candidate for the accreditation through the Middle States Association and the Commission for Elementary and Secondary Schools. So the accreditation is a self-evaluation process that schools and school districts voluntarily use to determine that they are meeting a defined set of research-based performance standards. The standard seeks to examine schools in a holistic approach and ensures that supplemental student testing data is used to provide a comprehensive measure of schools' performance and chart a strategy and realistic course of continuous school improvement. This accreditation really is an external system to evaluate the organization's efficacy on commitment to standards, the deployment of resources, the connection of various departments, including how the school budget supports the academic vision for the building. It provides staff with a greater sense of pride, and of course, that external validation is a means for boosting morale and providing confidence to our staff members that their work is indeed on the right track. It provides a coalition of parents, teachers, and administrators who are also working to ensure that diverse groups are being afforded the highest possible standards for academic excellence. It gives our school an advantage where parents who want to send their students to schools with high academic standards that are supported through an external accreditation process. And without accreditation, many schools have not been able to ascend, many students have not been able to attend certain colleges because those programs or even grants and loans that are often available are designed specifically from schools, from systems with accreditation. So I'm very pleased to say that we are on target. I thought the interview went very, very well. We will find out soon if we are accepted in that process. Lincoln School is our test site for accreditation, and should we find this process to be successful, we will be looking to expand this over the course of the next several years so that all of our schools effectively become accredited by the Middle States Accreditation Association. This is the blue ribbon, if you will, of academic excellence and validation. Additionally, just by way of providing the board with an update, as per the board's request, all the bid documents for paving, plumbing, landscaping, snow removal, waste management, general services, and electrical services have been revised to include the DEI language with help from District Council. It is now posted on the district website. All bids will be opened on November 22nd. So I am saying for those businesses out there who may be a part of this process, please check our website for specific times, and we will be ready to award bids at the first meeting in December, which will be effective January 21, 2022, through June 30, 2022. So just wanted to give you that update in terms of advancing our work from the DEI, the adoption of the DEI policy, to connecting with our procurement process and potential vendors and bidders in the district. And just by way of an update on the bathroom renovations, we are making tremendous progress at Denzel Washington. Lower-level bathrooms are complete. The floors have been leveled, and 75% of the tile has been installed. The plumbing fixtures are being installed as we speak. Wall tile will be installed later this week. And electrical information, the electrical outlets will also be installed. The first floor, boys' bathroom partitions have been replaced. The ceiling is being evaluated for potential replacement. Second floor, girls' bathroom, the demolition is complete, and plumbing is exposed for tiling. This will also be accomplished this week. On the second floor, boys' bathroom, all demolition is complete. Second floor, girls' room, all demolition is complete. At Edward Williams, six bathrooms have been identified for renovation. There are currently 19 bathrooms in the building. When this project is complete, 16 of the 19 bathrooms will be renovated, and then we'll start to talk about the next round. The second boys' bathroom, there's two boys' bathrooms and two girl bathrooms on the second floor annex, and there is one bathroom, a boys' room, and one girls' bathroom on the first floor annex that are also slated for complete renovation. So again, of the 19 toilet rooms, 16 of them will be complete when this project is done. We are also starting the Parker project. There are four bathrooms at Parker slated for renovation, and that will include the boys' and girls' bathroom on the first floor and the boys' and girls' bathroom on the second floor. And that will begin immediately following the Edward School renovation. You've been receiving information about two events that are upcoming. First is the Unity Day, which will be this Friday from 7:45 to 3:30 at Mount Vernon High School. Our students and our community have been working with the Mount Vernon City School District Administration, and the school administration has been diligent in making sure that all voices have been heard and represented in our efforts to create greater unity. This will culminate our efforts to reassure our students and our families by hosting Unity Day at Mount Vernon High School this Friday, November 19, from 7:45 to 3:30. Students, all of their students at that point, will be welcomed back. In totality, they are going to be challenged to refrain from fighting and return to learning. The community members that are expected to be in attendance to support this Unity Day includes our local politicians, community members, clergy, members of our Divine Nine, which is the various sororities and fraternity members that are represented in the district, primarily amongst our administrators group, and will stand in solidarity to support our students. And I know board members are also planning to attend because you have shared that information with me. And we will walk Mount Vernon halls. We will be represented in the community. And this is just about making a statement that we are in concert with what we expect of our students and our community and showing this united force as we reestablish and set the reset button to address some of the issues we've been hearing about at Mount Vernon High. And then on Monday, it's quite apropos, that Monday, November 22, is National Stop the Violence Day. We will be hosting a seminar that is scheduled to run from 8:15 to 2:30 in recognition of National Stop the Violence Day, Healing Our Schools, Stop the Fighting, and Return to Learning. Students and staff will be able to tune in to the webinar throughout the day at any time. We will have support groups that are in the room to focus on social-emotional learning, developing positive school culture. And during these times, the valedictorian and salutatorian will participate in a panel discussion regarding their coping skills during the pandemic, which is something the students actually asked to talk about. And they are expected to engage in a student discussion from 12 o'clock to 12:30. So I'll invite it to attend. The Dr. Smith's office will be sending the link out district-wide to anyone who wants to participate in the webinar that, again, will run continuously throughout the day. We also received a very, very good, what I call, appraise report from Fordham University. They just conducted a study and found that our pre-K students have shown a 90% increase in their reading skills based on the data provided to them and the assessments provided at the site. The enrollment consisted of 11 of our students who participated in this program, and they outperformed their peers by 91%. So I think that provides greater validation, if you will, and data about our commitment to early education. The Fordham Reading University wrote a statement relative to this, and it says, "We rarely see charts that take such a great look at student achievement that compares to yours. The institute instructors found that our students were delightful and engaged and truly a joy to work with. The students were clear that they want to become more comfortable and confident in their reading and writing, and it showed in their efforts and engagement." So overall, the weekly workload for reading and writing participants had 50 minutes of weekly writing assignments, small group online instruction, 45 minutes of online practice, and skill practice could be done at home or in school. So overwhelmingly, we are very pleased with the report from the Fordham Institute. And that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening, and we have no presentations.
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, are there any questions right now from the board?
So, do you have a...
Thank you, Dr. Hamilton, for that report. Can you give us about maybe a life and death dates for the Denzel Washington restrooms, the Edward William restrooms, and the Parker Elementary School restrooms?
I don't have dates on this particular report, but I do know that Denzel Washington is scheduled to be complete before winter recess, the holiday recess, I'm sorry. And then Cecil Parker will follow that. There's only four bathrooms there, so I would imagine the timetable would be very similar. But I anticipate that all of these bathrooms will be complete by the winter, the spring recess.
Thank you. So none are actually complete at this time?
There are some that are complete at Edward Williams.
Okay, but not at Denzel Washington. Okay, okay, I want clarity on that, all right. Anybody else have any questions before we move on to committee reports? Okay, I'll start with trustee Miller. Would you like to, you have any committee reports to share?
Sure. Well, first, I would like to extend my best wishes to Rick McCormick. I am going to miss him terribly, and I'm not going to cry right now. But I've worked very closely with Rick in a number of initiatives, in addition to just being a board member, but as board president, also working with him on PR, communications on the website. And he has been really incredible, can-do always, will-do always. And he's just been a joy to work with and very supportive and really a large part of the central office, you know, system, the lifeblood of the system. So I wish him well. I told him, he said, "I didn't know if you'd be mad at me for leaving." And I said, "No, you know, you got a great job. You can walk to it. I mean, you don't have to deal with us crazy people." Anyway, but it's been a great seven, seven and a half years, and I wanted to say thank you, echo what Dr. Hamilton said. The Communications Committee and the Web Build Committee both met this afternoon. We had great conversations. We certainly overlapped because obviously our website is the key communications device for the district. We're hoping to have a kickoff meeting on the web build within the next two weeks, and then we will have a schedule with dates. So dates we have to meet and dates that the developer has to meet every week. But right now, it looks like it's a 16- to 20-month process. So we will be meeting, during that time, we will be meeting once a week. And we have a great cross-functional team right now that's working together and talking about best practices. And we are going to be recommending to the administration a, two of our favorite final site. Our web developer offers templates. So you pick a template. We picked Theme Plus, which means we can add some customization, but we will have a standard template that we pick. And we're going to be, it was amazing, we were able, in one meeting, to be able to recommend. People did do their homework, and I appreciate everyone who did that. But we are going to be able to recommend two templates that we think would be the best serve the district's needs going forward. Communications Committee met. We are going to be, I'm going to be following up with Dr. Hamilton and Liz Gallo in IT. Tomorrow, we have a form in English and Spanish that we are going to be able to have, a "Help Us, Help You, Update Your Contact Information" form that we're going to be able to push out to the principals in time for their parent-teacher conferences over the next couple of weeks. Dr. White-Walls is going to review it for us tomorrow as well. And then I discussed with Dr. Hamilton our desire to, you know, one of the key issues in going paperless is to have updated contact information. So the committee is recommending that we start, we kick off this initiative in January, you know, community-wide, you know, our district's going green and tie it in with a goal to be paperless, pretty much, maybe not for tax collection, but for almost everything else, for the '22-'23 school year. So it'll be an initiative all spring, and I'll keep you posted as we start, you know, building out the legs on the program. But it's a great collaborative, cross-functional team. I'm very excited to work with everybody, and I really, really appreciate all their effort and dedication to this process. That's, oh, one other thing, just a reminder that there is a shoe drive at Macedonia Baptist Church. You can drop off shoes, gently-used or new shoes that you bought, but they actually don't fit you, and so, you know, you wore them once, and you have to do something with them. Monday to Friday, 9 to 3, at Macedonia Church, and this is going through November 26. So you have another 10 days to get those gently-used sneakers, shoes, whatever, to Macedonia Church. Okay, so.
What time you get the nursing home?
You can drop off anytime between 9 and 3, and it's the nursing home ministry at Macedonia Baptist Church. Okay? Thank you very much. That's my report.
Thank you. Trustee Turnquist Jones?
Good evening, everyone.
Can you turn your mic, yeah?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Rick McCormick. I appreciate you for texting me and reminding me all the time of what to do. I appreciate you, my brother, and salute on the seltzer water. I met with Jeff Gorman, Glenda Sanchez, Rachel DePaul, Waveling Bennett Conroy, Sharon Spence, Ireshad, and Jessica, sorry, Beruffo on November 10, Wednesday. It was a really exciting meeting. We had it after work hours. So that means that we are still working when individuals are shutting down. We talked about phonemic awareness and high frequency. And the reason why we had this conversation is because we're trying to make sure that individuals understand what is taking place with our children who are special needs and are in need. And one of the major needs is phonemic awareness. So parents that are listening, grandparents that are listening, and anyone out there who is listening, we need to understand that phonemic awareness is extremely essential and extremely important. And so there is an experience that the children at Williams Elementary School are having right now, is the Gilliam multi-sentary experience. It's the reading instruction in the resource room with Jessica. Thank you, Jessica. And what she's doing is she's teaching the students about spelling rules, high-frequency words, phonemic awareness, which we do find out when children get to fifth grade that they did not get phonemic awareness, and then that's like going backwards. One of the interesting things is that Jessica says that she takes time out with parents to let parents know some of the things that they should be doing at home. So once again, if you know that your child is doing specific things in school, it's very imperative and very important that they are also doing the same things that are at home. In addition, got a chance to listen to Glenda Sanchez. She's the person that's making sure that the pilot program for the foundational literacy intervention system is in place. And so the children that do not get the Orton Gilliam, they are, and the teachers who did not get professional development in the Gilliam, they receive professional development in Spire, which is like the same methodology. You know how, like, there's a lot of programs that's out there where it's like an overlapping of things? And so the bang for the buck, again, is you're looking at the phonemic awareness once again, right? And so this is across the board, and it's in line with the New Generation Learning Standard. Just to let you know, it's no longer called No Child Left Behind Act, it's the New Generation Learning Standard. And they're using the Lexile levels. And one of the conversations that we had before I end is that one of the things that they noticed is that there are children who were evaluated and went through the assessments, and then when they did it again, some students were memorizing, right? And they did not really know or grasp the phonemic awareness, and that makes them go back and start again with making sure that they get the chunks and things of that nature that they need. Last but not least, the conversation about virtual education courses, which is extremely important right now. There are credit recoveries and homebound and temporary instruction that can take place There's a full curriculum in place. There are no contracts. So that means that if there are children who are in need of specific classes, for instance, if they need chemistry and they cannot find a chemistry teacher, there is a program that students can attend and receive their chemistry credit. It's a high, they have high-level courses that are difficult for when we are unable to find teachers. Dr. Gorman can help me when it comes to the naming of this program. But in the meantime, in between time, we are also looking at children who are medically fragile and unable to attend. So you know that there are some students during the height of COVID and now with COVID that they are unable to attend school because they will be in danger from being in the presence of other students. They can take these courses online. If anybody, continue.
Educia.
Educia. Thank you. If there's any questions, yeah.
Yes. Are we planning to train the resource teachers on Gilliam?
So there were, that's a good question. So there were 40 special education teachers that were trained with 30 hours on Gilliam. And the other teachers who are not trained, they were trained on Spire, which is the same methodology. And in the same breadth of the conversation that we had, we talked about paraprofessionals, paraprofessionals also being trained. But what they did was they did the educators first.
Yeah, but among those educators did, for example, I'm just going to throw because that's the only one I know right now, Mr. Levowitz from Pennington, was he trained on Gillian?
I don't know, I don't have the list of names of those who were trained on Gilliam. But, come to the mic, please.
Mrs. DePaul can kind of talk about the training process because this is going on for about three years now.
Good evening, everyone. For two consecutive summers, we offered both the beginning and the intermediate course in Orton Gillingham, which was a 30-hour training. They weren't certified to train the trainer, they were certified to execute both Level 1 and 2 if they were trained. We offered it to all special education teachers. Between 40 and 50 had taken advantage of at least one of the courses. Some had taken it two consecutive summers, so they are trained in it. So as far as... summers, so they are trained in it. So as far as all resource room teachers are offered the training, some teachers have the background in PAF, pardon me, PAF for Orton-Gillingham. So they're utilizing that multi-sensory reading instruction in their classrooms.
It's not a mandate that way.
No, it was not a mandate. Yes, it was optional for those teachers over the summer as a boot camp model.
Is there any further questions for Trustee Turnquist? Trustee McGowan?
Good evening.
I'll also publicly say thanks to Rick, who does a lot, a lot of work behind the scenes to help everything run smoothly. I really appreciate you. I had two different people ask me about the naming policy. So I just thought I'd quickly review the naming policy. I know we've been talking about naming some, I know Trustee Saunders, President Saunders is working on a committee for some of the schools. If anyone wants to read it, it's on the website. It's policy, it's in the 7,000 section of the NISBA policies. I'm not going to read it, but generally speaking, it's the board's discretion to name and the board's responsibility solely to name buildings, parts of buildings, et cetera. Renaming an entire building has to be done by a vote of the board at two consecutive meetings affirmatively. And you cannot name, we cannot name property after someone who has recently deceased without unanimous consent within, within a year of their death. That's typical of many school board policies, without unanimous consent. And just as a reminder to us all, as we think about ways to honor people in our community, it's not just buildings. We can also name scholarships, trustee positions, you know, opportunities, funds. So there's lots of other ways to honor people too, that I think we could do a better job of taking advantage of. Anyway, that's that. I had, and then I've had some community members ask me questions about COVID. So I guess this is a question for Dr. Hamilton. First, I know we've been doing some recent kind of pop-up vaccination sites in some of the buildings. And I know at one point, those were for only ages 12 and up. And is that still the case? And is there a plan to change that? Because now that the vaccines have been authorized for younger than 12, there's questions about that.
Yes, we are actually working on a plan that would expand, one, the testing, and two, offering the vaccination in our district for families who want it. We are not mandating the vaccine yet. That will ultimately be a state and then county decision that the board will have to consider at that point. But the testing, however, will be ultimately a mandate. There will be a process for parent consent as we include our younger learners in that process. And hopefully, the testing protocol that we're engaged in is designed to be random, a random sampling of 20% of our in-person population. And that will include staff and students, but an appropriate mixture of both. So you can't do your all staff and say you hit your 20%. You have to include all, all members of the building. But yes, it is our intent to embrace that new testing, the eligibility for the new testing protocols and educate our parents on that process.
Okay, so currently, the pop-up, the pop-up clinics are not available for under age 12?
We have not extended that yet.
Not yet. Okay.
But BC, do you know when, we'll probably get to that. I know we're looking at another vendor as well. I'll be able to support that.
Yes. The parent liaisons are working with Neighborhood Health Center and the county to do a pop-up site at homes between December 1st, 2nd, and 3rd for the second, for the kids who are under 12.
Five through 12.
Okay, great. And then just a general question, and you don't have, you don't have to answer on the fly. But, you know, we came from an era last year where we were getting daily updates about the number of COVID tests, sorry, COVID cases, positive cases in schools. And we've kind of transitioned to no calls or updates about that publicly. There's information on the website and public testing information I know is, is available. But I would appreciate at least, at least the board, if not the public, having some kind of general occasional update on how we're doing, maybe even just monthly or something. I have no sense of kind of where our numbers are relative to the community because obviously there's, there are places in the country where the numbers are creeping back up again. And I just want to make sure we are kept informed if the numbers start to creep up here.
We are, we saw a lull and now there is starting to be a pickup. The website is updated every day by four o'clock. So for those of you who are listening and want to get more timely, timely updates. And we are still notifying small clusters when clusters are impacted. We've been fortunate that we have not had to do a, yeah, I would be telling the truth. We have not had to do a full closure, school closure. We have had to close classrooms to quarantine as a result of a suspected cluster spread. But we've been pretty fortunate in that regard. I will say, we are seeing more students testing positive than we did this time last year, without a doubt. Absolutely more students. Most of our staff, many of our staff are vaccinated. So we don't have as many staff members, but the student numbers are creeping. But I'll be glad to report and provide that report to the board.
Do we have numbers? And are we permitted to publicly say, just as a percentage, the number of vaccinated staff we have?
Dr. Gorman, we just looked at that. What was that number? Yeah, we'll be able to give you that. We actually just reviewed that this morning.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, and I'll just, in closing, I'll say, count your blessings. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, next week.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you, Trustee McGowan. Trustee Sorensen?
Okey-dokey. Once again, Rick, I just came in and you have become my bestie. And I will definitely miss your guidance and our talks and what else can I say? Okay, so the special ed committee met November 12th. And Mr. Paul and I had a wonderful conversation. And we discussed how we are once again using a supplemental curriculum called UNEAC. And it will help, this helps the teachers differentiate lessons, you know, in order for the kids to meet the standards, the state standards, or many, or meet their needs. This, it was, if I'm not mistaken, it was used before the pandemic, right? And then due to the pandemic, we stopped using it. And once again, we're using it and training our teachers. So the ball is rolling and I'm very happy about that. And regardless of, also, we talked about how we use the New York State Alternative Assessment Test. And regardless of us using it, we were looking into another assessment called the Sandy. The New York State test focuses more on our students with different abilities to meet the New York State standards. However, the Sandy is a more, is conducted twice a week, twice a month, a year, I apologize. And it focuses more on areas such as science, transition, vocational, mathematics, fine growth, motor skills, communication, adaptive daily living skills. And it gives the teacher an immediate view of the need of that particular student. Also, it's a very good way to, you know, because we write the IEPs and all of a sudden, either the, the goal was either set too high or too low, or the kid just met that goal. So it helps the teachers to really get to know the students. And when the IEP comes, write more appropriate goals. The other thing that we discussed was the interest of involving two parents in our committee. So there will be more transparency and also is creating a direct bridge with the committee. And Miss, the other thing is that Mr. Paul has something to tell us about tomorrow.
Good evening again. So tomorrow night will be our first Special Education Advisory Council meeting. It's going to, going to be held virtually. The topics that it will include are the possibility of organizing a special education PTA chapter. So we'll have the PTA Council's president and vice president with us for the first few minutes of our meeting to discuss the logistics of that and developing a chap, establishing a chapter. Additionally, Westchester Institute for Human Development will be there to give parents an overview of the available resources and programs and trainings at WIHD. We will have one of our school social workers sharing with parents, social emotional support for students with disabilities. We will have one of our special education teachers discussing strategies to support students with school readiness skills. And we are anticipating a guest appearance by Mansa Gori, who is one of our band teachers here in the district. He is also an author. So we will be having an author discussion as well. So the session will be taking place virtually. The link, the Zoom link will be placed on the website. And the session will be from 5:30 to 7:00 PM tomorrow night. Do you want me to speak about the state stakeholders?
Sure, sure. That would be great. Thank you.
Okay. So New York State Department of Education, every few years has a stakeholder engagement meeting. So there are multiple indicators that districts are accountable for. So the New York State Ed Department is having virtual special education, state performance plan, stakeholder engagement meetings. So they are webinars. So it's really no input from the stakeholders. However, they are able to participate and really gain an understanding of what those indicators are and what the responsibility of the local educational agency is and how it pertains to that particular indicator, how we measure it, the work we do towards gaining compliance and/or meeting the criteria established by state ed. So on our website, on the special education page, I believe, Mr. McCormick, the actual invitation from New York State Ed Department is there. So there is a link where you can go and sign up for particular indicator webinars to gain a better understanding about transition goals, the eligibility status, looking at more restrictive environments, preschool to school age transition and such. So I've been participating in them. They're offered during the day and in the evening. There was a waitlist for a lot of them because every school district is accountable for them on a cycle. So this year, we are on transition, which I believe is indicator 13. Last year was referrals on the preschool side. So every year, like we're a cycle. Every district in the state actually adheres to, there's about 13 or 15 indicators. So it's very informative for those people in the community that want a better understanding as to the why and what's involved in a district's process and systems for accountability. So that is also available on our website. And I believe that is from the, there's a link in the banner for special education notice. If you look at the very top of our webpage, and you just click on it, it'll take you into the New York State Stakeholders Notice. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
I have a quick, could I ask one question?
Of course you may.
I just want to know, has it been announced to the parents and the public of this meeting before now? Was it announced before now?
We did it last week.
Okay, you did, okay. I just want to know how, so that people have a chance to know, because if you're not tuned in right now, you may not be aware that the Zoom link is on our site. Are we planning a robocall or anything like that?
Robocall and 1,500 paper announcements were mailed out. And for the stakeholders meeting, we had postcards made. Those were also mailed to the homes for informational purposes.
Thanks. Very appreciated.
The robocall is tomorrow.
The robocall is tomorrow. Finally, I, and I don't even know how I'm going to start this conversation. And this is not a criticism. This is something that I just want people to know. I did share it with my fellow trustees via text. And I just want to discuss this. We all know that we're working very, very hard on making sure that our students, our staff, and everybody else in Mount Vernon High Schools are safe and that everybody is getting the best education that they can. And to bring Mount Vernon High School to the, back to the glory days that I have been hearing for so many years. However, unfortunately, we're facing this and we're working hard. We're going to do it. I know we are. I have trust in this family. But when, by pure coincidence, I was approached by some of their security guards. And the situation again about the earpieces, about them having back their earpieces came about. They are very concerned that having, them having their walkie-talkies being extremely loud and saying, you know, breaker, breaker, whatever, there's a fight on, on, on the corner, south corner of, you know, whatever. It's basically, students also are going to hear it and what's going to happen. Everybody's going to go chasing it to see the fight. So that's one of the concerns. The other concern comes into having the administration being trained to deal with this, to deal with management, behavior management, because they feel that there is a lack of behave, you know, behavior management training in the building. The other thing was that, and this is something that I did ask around, and I was told that the last time we did this was in 2018. The other thing that they were very concerned was that we are having students that don't belong in Mount Vernon coming to the schools. There are kids that take the train to go to Brooklyn, that take the train to go to the Bronx. And I understand there are special cases in which we have students coming here. I get it. But I'm just passing on the message that it was given to me. And that they see it every single day. That they see every single kid, you know, a whole, like a bunch of kids coming from the outer, you know, the outer, the Bronx and Manhattan and Brooklyn. Last was that, and I like, once again, I am just passing on the message. So don't kill the messenger. There is an exit door by the science lab that, that door is being utilized to let outsiders into the building. They have tried, there's a classroom right there. The teacher that was in that classroom is very much afraid to tell the kids not to do that or whatever it is. And they try to basically monitor that area much, but they don't have the, you know, the, back then, now we have, thank to Dr. Hamilton, we have people, extra security guards there. But they didn't have the manpower to basically be on that door 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that's about it. And that's what they told me. And they, they concerned. They're very worried because, for example, the conveyor, the belt that has the camera in which they scan, the scanner in which they scan the backpacks are not working. That's not working. So they don't know who's coming in with what. So they're very worried about that. They worry very about their safety. And that is the message they told me to pass on to you.
Okay. So let me, I'd like to respond. And I appreciate the opportunity to do so. There is an ongoing professional development provided on superintendent conference days on de-escalation and peer mediation for security. So they need to, they do need to revisit that. That is true. In terms of the walkie-talkies, the earpieces have already been deployed, ordered and deployed. So they're still in the process of training them on how to use it and distributing them. But I know they're there because I've seen them use them. So that is in the works. Students who are not domicile in Mount Vernon, if we get a tip on that, that's immediately investigated. So if they have any suspicion of a student who is not domicile in Mount Vernon, that is illegal. So they should be providing that information to the principal who provides it to us. And then we conduct investigations which sometimes include surveillance. So they should pass that information on. The exit door by science room, I heard that as well. The school has worked on a plan, including teacher input, on how these additional security people should be deployed and what their areas are concerned are, are relative to the building. Door coverage, second floor coverage after arrival and during dismissal time were two of the areas that, that they brought up as well. Door coverage, second floor coverage after arrival and during dismissal time were two of the areas that they brought up as well. And the scanners at the door, that may have been true two weeks ago, but two new scanners were ordered. And in the interim, there were two scanners moved from another building that were not being used to replace the two that were broken. So they should be for the operation.
No, but I just want to say that this, this was not, yes, I was meant to say that. This was not, yes, this was basically a week, this was a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, something like that? No, a week, a week ago, right?
All right, that would make.
Yeah, it was a week ago. So we didn't have a meeting, you know, this past week. So this was a couple of days ago. So thank you, Dr. Hamilton, for, you know, clarifying, and I hope if they're listening that this brings, you know.
Yep, perfect. Thank you for that.
Well, the other thing I was saying about the domicile, and I, and I just want to request this because I know that the last one was done in two thousand eighteen. Can we do a?
Reregistration?
A reregistration or address verification?
We did a reregistration and it was disastrous.
Okay.
It was disastrous. So I would prefer a random, because parents were very, very put out by being asked to re-register. So I think it's more effective for us to identify potential violators of our enrollment policy and investigate them rather than take the whole district through a re-registration process. We did identify about seventy kids when we did that reregistration, though, in all fairness. But the investigation, and we do get tips. So the investigation on those particularly that you're seeing getting on buses, that's a trigger. Constantly coming late, that's a trigger. Coming from a different direction on the other side of Chester Heights, for instance, that's a trigger. So things like that, we can definitely investigate. And I'm also going to be setting up an anonymous, anonymous tip line as well. So people can access that as well for various reasons, and we'll talk about that. I'll give you more information about that.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, I, I have a follow-up for, so that's great that the high school is getting earpieces. What's happening to the walkie-talkies? Because we have other schools in the district that don't have anything.
They're being redeployed, exactly. They're being redeployed to our elementary schools where they don't have some, or don't have enough. Everybody has some, but then they'll all have enough, but they'll be redeployed.
And I, this is just more a comment, I guess, than anything, and I know I'm preaching to the choir. And it's appropriate that we have recently been focusing on the high school so much. It has unique challenges given its size. It's so much bigger than the other schools, both in terms of population and physical size. There's so many doors. It's harder to manage a building that giant. I get it. But let's not forget that we also have an increase in fights across the district. It's not just the high school.
That's true.
It's also in the eighth graders and the seventh graders at many schools. And this is a problem that is not unique to Mount Vernon. It's happening everywhere, but we can't control other places. All we can control is Mount Vernon. So again, to reiterate Dr. Hamilton's robo-call that went out, this is a community problem. It's not a school problem. It's a problem for all of us. It's your problem, listening people. It's your neighbor's problem. You, you know, we have to help each other. It's your own kids, your neighbor's kids, your nieces and nephews, the friends of your kids. We need to de-escalate this city across the board, not just at the high school and not just among the seniors or juniors. It does. And so let's, let's keep the focus on this at every school until we can get it reasonably under control.
All right, thank you for that, trustee.
So in regards to the, the science door being in and out, so can you just talk to me, Dr. Hamilton, about the, are there any alarms on the doors of schools?
Some of the newer doors, yes. There are alarms and there are triggers that go right to the security monitors that are manned the entire time of the day, where the security systems have been updated, particularly at Mount Vernon High School. Not all of the doors have the panic bars on them that triggered the alarm yet, but they are all scheduled for being updated accordingly.
Okay, so I just want everybody to know and listeners to know that there's a law in two thousand fifteen for Avante. Avante was a little boy that left out of a New York City public school, and they did not find him till months later. He was cut up and chopped up and killed. And so the Avante law is the law that says that there are supposed to be alarms on every single door and that the doors are supposed to be checked on a regular basis, making sure that the alarms are working. And there are certain individuals in the schools who are supposed to have the keys. And that law was set by U. S. Senator Schumer. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just jumping on. On what my trustee, my fellow trustee Michael was saying, it is true. It's a community, you know, issue, and we all have to work together. And it takes a village, and this is why I'm presenting to the board for us to start again the Student Activity Committee, so we could start bringing activities to the kids, so we could start, you know, like having them work with us, having them, you know, just get together and be outside and do something other than hanging in the corner. You know, so I would love to be part of that committee, and we should start that committee once again.
So I just want to just let you know that the Youth Bureau set out like almost a fifty-page brochure letting Mount Vernon know the plethora of activities, clubs, and things to do ranging to the age of twenty-four. So I'll just make sure that I get you that book, because that booklet, I think I passed it out here a couple of, a couple of months ago, because the same thing happened again with the individuals. A lot of individuals saying that there aren't things for Mount Vernon to do, but the Youth Bureau have a stockload of things to do. Just wanted to reiterate that. And I just wanted to make another question again. I know I asked about the alarms. Can you just give us a snapshot of how cameras look in the, in the building and how they tested to see whether or not they work?
You know, Mr. Baviello, Mr. Baviello, if you could just kind of respond to the security cameras and particularly at the Mount Vernon High School, because this is the most elaborate one we have, I think. All the schools, yes, but it's, it's the prototype. But the security cameras and the mechanism for monitoring.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So Mount Vernon High School has an existing security camera system in place. We are scheduling as part of the next round of security work. I believe Mount Vernon High School is going to be one of the focuses of that next round. Mandela has, let me rephrase that, Mandela, Pennington, Graham, and Thornton were on this previous round of security upgrades as part of the bond work. I'd say Mandela probably has the most robust system in place to date. As part of that, we installed a new central system, monitoring, digital monitoring. The security staff has been trained at those five locations thus far, including the Mount Vernon High School staff. We made sure to include them in that training so that they're aware of how the new system will be moving forward. In terms of monitoring, the new system was installed by a vendor. The day-to-day monitoring is by our, our security staff.
And those schools that are not in this batch, when are they, are they in the BCS? Or is that a separate plan for bringing the other schools that you did not mention on board?
That would be a future plan.
Okay.
But we did ask the schools and our consultants to identify any deficiencies that were known in terms of security on the BCS, so that we prioritize that work.
You good, trustee?
One more thing. So the, the other thing that I want to just talk to you real quick is in regards to the discipline code. The individuals that I've spoken to, I didn't go to any schools in Mount Vernon, but there's a lot of individuals who I'm friends with who stipulated that there was a specific type of discipline code. And I think it'd be safe enough to say that it is, to, to share how that discipline code works, especially when it comes to individuals who are engaging in, in violence and bullying in particular.
Well, I, I will tell you, one of the things that's in work and is premature, but I will share it since you, you kind of opened that door, is to revisit our Code of Conduct so that it reflects what we're dealing with today. And that will include systems of accountability for students who videotape and are non-physical participants, but maybe joining and posting, videotaping and posting. There's a system of accountability for those students. We're also working with, our goal is to not create circumstances that will have our students be criminalized or get caught up in the juvenile justice system. And of course, suspension is not an ideal situation, and I've never been a big supporter of out-of-school suspensions. But the Code of Conduct needs to be re, be more reflective of our current circumstances and issues that we are dealing with now. Part of that will be rolled out at Mount Vernon High on Unity Day because they have done the work to start revisiting their Code of Conduct and then how we roll that out in each school. And we've tried in the past, the last time we did the Code of Conduct, which is about, I guess that was about four years ago, we unified it across the district. And I think we need to revisit that and retrain people so that its application is consistent across the district and so are sanctions, because we do see some peaks and valleys in how it's administered. And to the extent that PBIS is fully implemented makes a huge difference as well. And that is reflected in the data. When we see very, very few student discipline issues in schools, you can see a direct correlation between the efficacy and the full implementation of B C, PBIS as it relates to student discipline and adults being accountable as well.
I was going to ask that question.
So that is on our radar, and we are revisiting that, and you can anticipate updates very soon in that regard.
But when you say adults, we talk about parents.
Parents and teachers.
Okey-dokey.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustees Orson. I just want to ask, I do have a couple of questions, actually, just regarding the metal detectors. So are we saying that the metal detectors are in full operation at the high school right now?
Yes, they are.
They are?
Yep.
Okay.
That was not true two weeks ago.
Okay, so as of yesterday, say at least yesterday, the metal detectors are back in effect. Are there any other schools in our district that are in need of metal detectors that don't have them and are they fully functional at those buildings?
Well, we did take the two, we took two from, you remember where they came from, Dr. Graham? I don't remember if they were STEAM or Denzel Washington.
STEAM Academy.
The STEAM Academy, because they were not using them to the same extent. They didn't need as many. Long story short. Student population is slower, lower and et cetera. But I am unaware of any school other than the ones mentioned that need them.
Okay, so we also, Trustee Sorson made a good statement about the committees and the activities. And we also have been talking recently about the community school that we're working towards. And that would definitely, I'm sure, be a good step in the right direction to give children a place to, a safe haven, you know, after school hours rather than just be out and about. And in that type of setting, we could have those committees built and recreated. We can, you know, move forward doing that type of thing. I just wanted to mention that. I also wanted to mention it, I have two teenagers that are in, there's a program here, it's, you know, so, through the Youth Bureau, it's called Ready for Life. My teenagers go there. They have room for one hundred and forty people, and there are only twelve children there. And it's because they really just, people really just don't know about it. But when I talk to my teenagers every day, now, it's only like four days out of the week. So you could pick like Monday and Wednesday or Tuesday and Thursday. My, my, my son and daughter go every day that they can, right? So they come home and they have these really incredible conversations. Parents can't come in. It's like a safe haven for the kids so that they can talk about all types of topics that, you know, and it is true, there's still, even in our day and time, there's still things that are taboo for kids to talk to their kids, to their parents about, which in all actuality is really unhealthy to a good extent because they're getting wrong information and poor direction from people who are their age who know no better than they do. So what Ready for Life does over at Friendship Church, it gives them ability to come in after school, sit down, have these incredible break-off into groups with Ms. Williams and her team, and they have these incredible conversations, all types of subject matter. Stuff that, like I know I've had these conversations with my kids at home already, but there's a lot of children sitting in, students sitting in those meetings that have never had those type of conversations. And they're very thought-enhancing, and they just open up new way of thinking. Things that they're not even thinking about. It gives them the ability to really be exposed. So I just wanted to mention that as well. And I'm going to roll into my own committee report right now. So yes, I'm going to also shout out Rick McCormick. I also will not cry. Rick, Rick has been, Rick has been the voice of Mount Vernon City School District for all the years that he, that I've known him to be their voice. So the first time I walked in and met him in the office, I said, "It's the voice of Mount Vernon City School District, live and direct." It was the coolest thing in the world. So yeah, Rick, we're going to miss you a lot. And we understand a seven-minute commute is a hell of a lot better than a two-and-a-half-hour commute, so, in one way. Yeah, so I totally get that. I want to also say really quick right now, big shouts to our TAs and our security staff on today. All right, today is SRP Recognition Day. So right off the heels, we're talking about what we've been speaking about, the challenges that our security guards are facing at, definitely at the high school. You got to really think about what's going on. We lost our SROs, right? So we also lost a lot of staff members, because remember, we're in the, we're in the grace resignation. It's what they're calling this, okay? People are leaving jobs, not just because, you know, they hate it where they are or this, that, and the third. Just because now is the greatest time ever for people to resign and just reinvent themselves and their career. It doesn't matter how long they've been in that career. People are just, and it's not just in a school district. It's not just in one particular vocation. It's across every sector. People are resigning left and right, and it's insane. So I want to say that our security guards are facing incredible, unsummountable challenge when they're dealing with, you know, sometimes you got one person dealing with thirteen, twenty-two children that are, have, they're, they're in the middle of a brawl. How do you send one person who's five foot four into that type of situation and all of these kids are like six foot and they're just in a rage, okay? And you got, how many bathrooms in the building that are operational and staircases where kids are vaping and they're doing this and they're doing that? It's not just one school. It's not just the high school. Yeah, the high school right now is hot, right? Everybody's talking about it constantly, but it's not just the high school. You know, even some of the schools, everybody's like, hey, that school is really nice. They don't have, no, that school actually has issues as well. If you just talk to who's in the buildings every day, you'll find out. So we got to definitely shout out and appreciate our security monitors in our buildings. And while we were talking about earpieces, you mentioned something really important about when they hear somebody say, "Fight over at this place here," everybody in earshot of that runs to the scene, right? Why don't we have codes? Police have codes. If they say, "I got a, I got a seven fourteen over at so-and-so," you're sitting there like, "Seven fourteen, that sounds like, I don't know what's going on in seven fourteen." They need, why, why do our security guards not have, do they have codes like that? Can we get that type of?
They do have codes.
And are they using them?
Some kids have figured out those codes.
Yeah, I mean, everybody knows, "What's your twenty?" Everybody knows, "What's your twenty?" But.
So I mean, I mean, just the safety agent should know that they can't eliminate a radio because if, if there's a man down and there's a radio that's, that's live and there's somebody around who is not a security, they can step in and see what's going on. You can't turn the, you can't turn, you can't turn the walkies off.
Right.
Right? There's a certain, there's a certain way that you talk. And if they're talking that certain way and holding themselves professional in a certain way, not saying that they're not, then there's certain things that happen. Remember, I'm, I'm, I'm in New York City. I'm in the Polo Grounds. And there's nobody running to the fights with the, with the walkies. But it's the way that you word things, and it's the way that you do your walks, and you're making sure that there's, there's stairwells that are clear on a regular basis. Every fifteen minutes, you're supposed to be reporting on that walkie, and that's the question that I had. Is there anybody in here in this building, Dr. Hamilton, that have earshot of the walkie as to what's going on when they're in Mount Vernon High School?
Yes, I have a radio that's currently out on repair, but prior to, two weeks ago, I do have a radio that I get all channels on, so I can hear. And I can also call for lockdown, because sometime I get information before schools do about something that may be going on in the area, and I need to call from a lock, for a lockdown from, from my unit. So I do have ability to do that.
Right, because what's supposed to happen is that when there is an alert like that that's going on. Right, because what's supposed to happen is that when there is an alert like that that's going on, individuals in, in this building should be deployed and go out to there and, and begin with assistance.
Yep, we absolutely do do that.
So, um, moving back over to SRP, um, our TAs also deserve a huge shout out because we are definitely understaffed on our TAs, again, uh, trying to bring in the best and brightest as fast as possible without any, without the, the hiccups that we faced in prior years. But, uh, a big shout out to our TAs who are struggling to, um, maintain their course curriculum, do what they're supposed to do for their, their students, especially our, our, our special needs, uh, TAs that are, uh, teaching, uh, their classes and getting pulled out to handle a substitute movement for a second because somebody's out today and, and people, everybody trying to cover 13 different places at one time. You know, you guys really all deserve more than a salute, more than a hand clap. You guys deserve a handshake and, and probably, you know, some sort of alcoholic beverage after hours. So I want to thank, I'm thanking on behalf of the board, every last one of you for what you do. And I would be remiss if I were not to mention the parent liaisons who work for our district, and you guys are incredibly, incredibly appreciated, all right? Because you guys are actually doing so much of the heavy lifting that nobody really knows, right? How many people know that you guys actually exist in what you do? So hey, I know you exist, and I damn sure appreciate you, so, thank you all very much as well. Now, I want to talk about the fact that, um, I'm involved in the renaming of two buildings, both Columbus and Holmes. And before everybody goes on Facebook and says, "Why they keep changing all the names?" Bottom line is, we live in a time when information and it's, and access to data that we didn't know about, a lot of these historical characters are now at your fingertips. Your kids are coming home knowing, "Hey, you know what, uh, he's, they said he founded the country, but, uh, he also had this and that." You know, we're trying to re, in, in rebranding our district, we're trying to also move away from negativity. Uh, and that includes even, even down to the name of the building. It's not something that we're gonna allow to take six months. We already had final conversations with both the schools, and we are planning to, uh, we should be able to conclude the true renaming of those two buildings before Christmas arrives. Um, so it's gonna be something that's, it's gonna be great. And really what we're doing is it's bringing positivity to the, the names are gonna be synonymous with positivity, with, with, with power, with something that the children will feel like, "Wow, yeah, I go to this school." And that's what it should come back to, right? So when I talk about, when I go to the schools on South Side and I say, "Hey, these buildings look terrible, some of these conditions are awful," we gotta remember that so many of those kids are coming to school and they live in a lower income area. You know what they're seeing at home, and they're coming to school and seeing worse. That's why it's so important that we, you know, that I'm walking into buildings and I'm making noise, and I'm coming back, I'm getting on everybody's nerves with emails, right? Right, and a couple of y'all saying here, saying, "Yeah, we got another email coming from Trustee Mitchell and Dana." So, um, so that's what the renaming situation is about. I, I wanted to finally answer that, and I know that right now, uh, Trustee McGowan, you said that you were approached as well, uh, you know, and we understand the definite, um, impact that, uh, you know, certain, uh, people in our, who served our district had. So it's not being, uh, ignored at all by any means, so, um, but that's, that's, uh, I'm gonna be out visiting bathrooms this week. Because I just heard bathrooms is looking pretty good, and I want to see them looking pretty good. I want to see where we are.
Let me give you the list, so you go to the right places.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna go to the right place, I'm gonna go to the wrong places, I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to all the places. Okay, that's all I have for right now. Trustee White, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Um, I've been like, not under the weather, but I have to say Warren and Trustee Red, uh, Trustee Warren and Trustee Red has really taken, um, my part in, um, building the ground, facilities, building the grounds. And I thank you for it. Soon as my knees get better, I'll be out there with you.
Yeah, we're gonna come. Oh, I'm sorry, you know, I gotta come back, one hot second. I also want to shout out, um, everybody involved in the Hot Breakfast rollout. Amy Mizelli and Mike Palicchio and everyone else involved. The Hot Breakfast new, uh, plan rolled out on Monday, and I heard it was, uh, something good, something delicious. Couple of my, my kids came home, I said a couple more of my kids, I got a few kids. So, some of them came home and said, "Yeah, breakfast was something new, they didn't heard, haven't heard of it." Chicken, uh, sausage and, uh, uh, pancakes or something like that, so shout out to everybody involved in that. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, now I'm done. Trustee Red?
Good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to say thanks again to Rick McCormick for always bugging us about what we need to bring and all that stuff, so, you know, good luck in your endeavors. Y'all answered all the questions. My, my main question was about the high school and schools in general. And I know you had sent out something about the people you have hired. Could you lay out to everyone what has been done since that fight at Mount Vernon High School?
Thank you for that.
Yes, please.
So, yes, thank you for that. So the leadership team, I worked with the leadership team at Mount Vernon High School who put together, uh, an action plan, some of which needed to be revised frankly. But this action plan included an opportunity to reset the button, uh, reorientate students and staff, um, the deployment of additional security people in the building. Uh, additional administrative positions have, have been, um, requested and supported. Um, and this will give the opportunity to really structure the divisions in a way that provides for greater oversight. This orientation or reorientation, if you will, also include, includes a parent information session so that parents are aware of what these expectations are in the building. Teachers have been asked to resume appropriate duties to aid in the supervision of students that are in the hallways. That, that includes, uh, deployment in certain strategic areas where we know there's high traffic, and, um, also where, um, students are passing in, in, in between classrooms, um, asking for teacher support and, and, and working with the union so that, uh, we are not advancing student contact time and, and violating the agreement in any way, but, uh, adding a collective effort to address discipline. Requiring our parents to be a part of readmittance conferences, uh, when and if students need to be suspended. Taking a strong stance on certain, uh, behaviors that we are seeing that are not necessarily reflected in the code of conduct because they're new, they're new to our, our era that we're in right now. Uh, so those things need to be updated, and they are, are, are doing that as well. And during this period, there's retraining on conflict resolution, peer, uh, mediation skills with, with staff in the building, and providing more clinical support in the building as well for students who are, uh, repeat offenders. And lastly, identifying, putting a protocol in place so that we have a system to monitor who those repeat offenders are. Because the fact of the matter is, it's a small number of students who are causing the continued disruptions, uh, but they are repeat offenders. So I, identifying who these students are and isolating, uh, those names so that we can separate them from the, um, general operation of the school and identify students who are doing what they're supposed to do so that they're not being penalized because of this handful of other students. So that protocol is also in place. Adding a detention room so that when students are not where they're supposed to be between classes, rather than just sending them off to another class, for example, that they will be escorted to a detention room in the building that will be manned during the course of the day. And looking at alternative arrival and dismissal times so that there are smaller groups coming in and out of the building at any given time.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm done. Trustee Munoz Patterson?
Rick, there's nothing left to say. Um, I am now the last of nine, so, um, you'll be missed. That's the truth.
She will.
Committee-wise, um, HR committee did not meet this week, and the budget committee continued to review the special ed spending, and we should have something to talk on the board level, um, maybe in the next three weeks, four weeks.
Trustee John Wilson?
Is it on now? Is it on? It's not working.
It's on.
You can take off your mask.
Can you hear me now? Yeah, now it's working. Okay, there we go. So sorry, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be a performance, isn't working out. First, I would like to say thank you so much, Ms. McCormick here. A lot of people don't know this, but before every single board meeting, he would call me and say, "Hey, you know what you're gonna say?" He'd say, "Are you, he'd be like, "Are you ready?" I'd be like, "Yeah, I think so." He'd be like, "Yeah, let's go over, let's hear it, let's hear it." This, he's such a supportive guy. He really cares about the community, you know, the overall environment which all these students are in. And honestly, I wish you the best wherever you go, whatever ventures you decide to do from here on out. It was a pleasure having you.
Thank you.
Um, on to my report, which is, is not a lot, but it's quite small. Um, what's about sports, you know, this is the beginning of winter sports. If people don't know, it started just this Monday. Everybody is excited. I was going to a couple of the events in the late fall, you know, kind of coming into the winter now. Uh, people have been keeping their masks on, that's firstly. Uh, had many fights or anything outside, which is good, you know, being a, being a better rep, bring a better rep to everybody. I just want to say, "Go swim team," because I'm biased and I'm on it. Oh, wait, one more thing, one more thing, so sorry. Ms. Sorenson just gave me the evil eye, so I remembered. She came to me with an idea. She wants to, um, she wants to start a program mostly around STEAM students and high school mentors for some of the middle schoolers, you know, she's looking at some of the problems and additions she feels, and she finds this could be a great way to kind of bring a positive influence as people transition from middle school into the high. She wants to include sports, she wants to include, she wants to include academics, you know, and people, that people can see positive mentors. You know, they can see, "Hey, this isn't the right path, but there's a better one. And here are these people that are doing it, and here are these people showing me the way." So if you want, I'll pass it on to Ms. Sorenson to be a little more specific.
Thank you. That was short. So it's basically, um, we are in the works. We are, um, he is talking to his classmates, and, um, we discussed for this to be a pilot and to use between six or eight high schoolers and then pick six to eight middle schoolers and pair them up according to their interests. And that's about it, you know, like, for them to have either weekly meetings or if, like, John was saying, the middle school is having an issue with algebra, for example. Be like, "Hey, I'm having an issue with quadratic equations, can, can you give me a little pointers," you know? And be that, like John said, that positive figure that, then they could say, like, "Hey, we have done it. We live in Mount Vernon, we are here, we're done it, we're graduating from high school, so can you." So that's about it. We just, we're still looking for the kids. We have not yet determined how we are going to pick the high, the, the middle schoolers. But it's a pilot, so we're just working on it.
Uh, one, one group, Trustee Sorenson, um, that you may want to, in terms of a pilot, is, maybe I'll invite you to the next Student, Superintendent, Super, Superintendent Student Advisory Council. That may be a good group to start with.
That'll be great, thank you. That'll be great.
I just want to say that's a great idea, and that's, um, that is a model that many, many private high schools use. Right, where it's the high-performing seniors are obligated to kind of be a big brother, a big sister to an incoming freshman or a couple of incoming freshmen, just, just to show them the ropes.
And one of the things that I've been interested in doing, and this would fit perfectly into that, I would like to see our students be required to complete a certain number of community service hours, uh, for graduation.
Yeah, I don't know how many, um, I don't know how many hours the National Honor Society, but you, you might want to check in with Peggy Williams at the high school because I know students I've mentored before have had to go in and tutor and do, do stuff like that at, at some of our elementary schools, and it might be that, you know, they, we could train them on a mentoring component as well. It'd be a good idea.
That was the whole thing, like, you know, um, because, you know, like, I'm, I'm, well, I'm just talking about myself, you know, I, I'm an only child, so it was, I never had like a big sister around, and, and that's what I always think, you know, like, how many of our kids right now, they're, you know, either the smallest one or the oldest one, they don't have anybody else to relate at home. And it's so nice for you to be able to just, like, we were talking about, "Hey, the latest anime, we both like anime. What, what are you reading? What are you watching? What are you doing this?" And just talk, you know, talk about whatever. But mostly what we're looking for is just to encourage them and to let them know that they, there is a better path, like John says. There is something better to doing, and if you don't want to go to college, okay, but you could become, you know, a plumber that will be making more money than I am. So, you know, but that's, that's about it, but thank you so much. That, that's a great suggestion, Dr. Sorenson. Um, Dr. Hamilton, geez Louise.
I'm sorry, really quickly, I think there was an aspect similar to what you're talking about with the, um, federal funds that we were getting. So maybe you want to touch base with BC too, because Dr. BC definitely has, I think, something along those lines as well.
Okay, that concludes committee reports. We're going to hold off on exec session for a sec, and we're going to skip over to our human resources resolutions. So we're gonna start, Mr. McCormick?
Just the two?
Yes, just the two.
We need a motion to approve Human Resources Resolution 6.1 dated November 16th, 2021.
Motion.
Second.
Trustee Miller, Trustee Mitchell, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Motion to approve Resolution 6.2, an amendment of an appointment of a Director of Career and Technical Education.
Motion.
Trustee McGowan, Trustee Sorenson, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries, sir.
I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Mr. Noel Campbell and Ms. Melissa White. Are they laughing already? We're doing it early, so you can leave while they, we are welcoming two, uh, two in-house candidates to, uh, these administrative positions, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate them and welcome them into the ranks.
Uh, do we have a motion to enter to executive session for the purpose of?
Good evening, we need a motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person or persons, collective bargaining agreements and negotiations between the district and the lunch monitors, a student matter, and to receive legal advice from council.
Motion.
Second.
Trustee Sorenson, Trustee Mitchell, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stain, motion carries.
Rick, is it because I didn't say it like last night, I think you can't hear me?
About it.
To resume?
Motion.
Years ago, I don't, I don't even know where it is.
Motion.
Trustee Sorenson?
Second?
Me, second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
We're back.
Should I pick up at 6.3?
Uh, we're back, can we, yes, can we please resume from the next resolution, Mr. McCormick?
All right, we need a motion to approve Resolution 6.3, the authorization to hire staff for a virtual quarantine support after-school program.
Motion, second.
Sorry, what are, which? 6.3.
Right, 6.3?
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. 6.4, the appointment of technology links, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Trustee McGowan, second?
Second.
Trustee White, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. 6.5, an amendment to an authorization for hiring staff to conduct a robotics teams at Denzel Washington School of the Arts.
Motion.
Trustee Patterson?
Second.
Trustee McGowan? Discussion?
My discussion is, I was on one of these robotics teams in high school. I know we already proved this, and this is just expanding hours. Awesome program, huge commitment, and go nerds. It's awesome. Yes.
Go nerds.
Hundred percent, yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yes, aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Motion to approve Business Office Memorandum 71 dated November 16th, 2021?
Motion.
Trustee Mitchell?
Second.
Trustee Sorenson? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. 7.2, authorization for Denzel Washington School of the Arts to travel to Rochester, New York.
Motion.
Trustee Mitchell?
Second.
Trustee Patterson? All, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
And congratulations, what an honor. That's, that's a great opportunity.
Yeah.
That's really great.
Yeah.
All right, eight point one, authorization to approve School Improvement Personnel Memor- Memorandum P two two dash seven dated November sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
Motion.
Trustee McOwen?
Second.
Trustee Mitchell, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Staying, motion carries. Eight point two, authorization to approve School Improvement Service Memorandum S two two dash ten, nove- dated November sixteen, twenty twenty one.
Motion.
Trustee Patterson?
Second.
Trustee White? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain, motion carries. Resolution nine point one, approval of Student Services Memorandum number nine dated November sixteen, twenty twenty one.
Motion.
Trustee McOwen?
Second.
Trustee Patterson? All those in fa- I'm sorry, discussion?
I, yes, I have some questions.
You start.
Okay. For the Special Olympics, I that's fantastic opportunity, the Special Olympics are amazing. I'm just, can we get some more details on here? Because the resolution is very generic and vague about what exactly this what are, what are we, no. It's just kind of, and you know, do the Special Olympics in a flat dollar amount. Can you just give more detail about what's happening?
The Special Olympics competes across Westchester County. So what, are you concerned about the amount of the stipend or just the overall, uh, compo- you know,
Well, normally, it, normally it's tied to a number of hours and this is just a lump sum, so I just don't know what's involved.
Okay, so we, at a late hour, we added the schedule. I was able to get that from the coach, so there's an attachment on the bottom. So the stipe, I'm sorry?
We're look, we're looking now, hang on.
It's, uh, mark number two. I think, uh, yes, it's two.
No, that's the original, that's not it.
It says two dot point Pioneer Schedule twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two.
So just a, just big picture, this is, so students on the Mount Vernon team will be transported to one location for practices?
No, they practice at Mount Vernon High School.
Okay.
They are transported to the locations where they're competing against another pioneer team.
Okay.
So for example, Norah Shell.
Is this, is this middle school and high school or just?
I believe that we've isolated it to high school age students just because of the availability. Rocky had said most of them were, um, the older children. I know. I think.
Got it, okay, so this, so this type and covers the 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 practices, going to the games, a final party and all that, okay.
And additionally, I know earlier there was a question about ou- hours, so these children are transported to their door in the evening.
Sure.
So the teaching assistants and the assistant coaches and coach, they accompany the kids on the bus to their doors. They're brought back to the high school to their cars and then their evening is complete.
Is this the same person that used to run the Special League before?
Rocky Ionello, yes, Coach Rocky. He's an adaptive phys ed teacher in the district.
That sounds excellent. I have no more questions about that one.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms.
I did have a question about a different one, the um, sorry, the all points licensed behavior analysts? I think it's number three. Nine point one. Three, sorry.
Who does that?
Authorized entering agreement with all point, yes, yeah, that's.
Right, um, I just, I just noticed that the price is per day and not per hour.
Yes.
And what constitutes a day? What is that?
Five and a half hours from the time the teachers sign in at eight twenty until the end of the day. At times, there is some conference or reflection at the end of the day. But as a total number of hours, it's inclusive of the entire school day because they are in the schools and classes for the entire day.
Okay.
So different classes?
Yes, they're in all of the autism cohort classes, life skills class at B T M S. And um, so that's Pennington Grimes and Rebecca Turner's autism cohort.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
All right.
Did you have other que- I have no other questions?
No, that's enough. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Superintendent Resolution eleven point one, approval of the settlement agreement between Piazza Inc. and the Mount Vernon City School District.
Motion.
Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Sorenson? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. All right. Eleven point two, preferring of charges pursuant to ci- civil service law section seventy five, an appointment of hearing officer for hearing. Is there a motion? Trustee White? Trustee McOwen? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. All right, Resolution twelve point one, authori-
Can I request that we approve them as a lump, twelve point one through twelve point eight?
Absolutely. A motion to approve.
All of the voting, it's all just for the election, it's the election resolutions.
Motion to approve twelve point one through twelve point eight.
So moved.
Discussion?
Well, I just have a question, which I don't think you know the answer to yet, is as of this moment in time, do we have any additional information about COVID procedures for the upcoming election? I know it's very early, we don't know anything yet, right? Okay.
Uh, the only question that I have in regards to uh, the voting is, uh, we had a discussion when I was coming in about how the ballot looked and how it was not friendly to those who were uh, second language, well, English is their second language.
Mm-hmm.
And so, want to be able to see how we can go about, uh, making a discussion and talking about how we can change that. There was far too much to me.
There was, there was, yeah, sorry. Oh, sorry about that. So the discussion that we had when, um, when I was running uh, for a school board along with, uh, Jeff, uh, was that we were concerned about how the ballots looked because a lot of the ballots, because we were doing a lot of home ballots instead of individuals going in and voting in person. And the ballots were not friendly for individuals who are second lang- where English is their second language. And also, it was extremely wordy, right? And so, and that is a part of the concern that we had. And to make it more simplified as well as friendly for individual, not intimidating and also cater to those who are, um, where English is their, uh, second language. Thank you.
So I think the question is, do we have any control over how the ballot actually looks or is that all mandated by the state?
So the attorney, the attorneys, um, are the ones who draft the resolutions, the resolutions are drafted by the attorneys. Uh, and the ballot format, I believe, is state is a, a generalized state format, but I shall certainly make note to Ms. Patterson about your concern. Any other discussion?
Another question, um, could you just remind us that this is a joint with the library and is it one ballot or two ballots? Is this the library election also or we approve that later? I don't remember.
So.
When I, when I ran, was, was joined with the library, right?
It's one ballot.
Yeah.
Um, that'll have two propositions, um, assuming that the library, I'm sorry. It'll be one ballot and assuming that the library and assuming that the library has a budget, there'll be two propositions for a budget vote uh, as well as two different spots for school, uh, for school board trustees and library trustees.
Okay.
Oh, so you mean that the budget vote will be, those will be lumped together, I mean, two, in one section?
Yeah, it'll be proposition one, school budget, proposition two, library, if the library chooses to once again move forward with us.
No further questions?
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Wanda got that one, I think.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night. See you in two weeks.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.